Being approximately six thirty and called this meeting of the Manchester. So, select board to order. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we here and is here.
Here. Or there.
Okay. Dean, I'm sorry, I sent you to the wrong place. Um. Okay, um, are here public comments on the items? Yes.
Thank you. Um, I just wrote this down so I didn't sound, um. Stupid, um, thank you select board and along my public comment this evening, um, you may or may not know, but. The Massachusetts Attorney General Andrea Campbell has lost it against the town of Milton, took center stage at the state's highest court today. Lawyers representing the town of Milton and the state presented their oral arguments. The case, as you know, sentenced from Milton's refusal to a drop zoning change required by the law. Attorney General Campbell sued the town earlier in the year, arguing she has brought authority to enforce the statute. Milton contended the law provides only for withholding certain grants as penalty for non-compliance. As we know, the court's eventual ruling could determine whether dozens of resisting communities face legal action. Or can maintain current zoning without any penalty beyond the loss of state funding. The justices today pressed lawyers from both sides on the limits of state power. Over local zoning and the adequacy of the law's enforcement mechanisms. The court also grappled with the law's impact on local democracy. A key issue in places like Marblehead and Milton where the voters have already rejected zoning. One of the justices begins with a W, I can't pronounce her last name. Questions suggest concerning that enforcing the MBTA Communities Act might override the democratic will. Of Milton's residents who exercised their voting rights to reject the zoning changes. Just some other brief takeaways from the justices, some different phrases were. Guidelines are normally background prohibitions. Some of the justices use phrases like the agency has run amok. And the guidelines are improperly implemented. When probing the import of the fact that the E H O L C did not utilize the procedures outlined in the state law chapter thirty A. Which agencies are required to follow when implementing regulations. So the question at hand is whether the guidelines are enforceable, that is what kind of came out of. The law today, um, the, the court today. And with it potentially not being enforceable. The, the deadline for Milton would then not be enforceable because the deadlines for compliance are in the guidelines. And there's some suggestion that this might all go back to the E H O L, E, E, O H L C for further evaluation and review. Unfortunately, we will have to wait for weeks for the outcome. Um, possibly, obviously not in time for our November, no, November eighteenth meeting. So my question and statement to the select board this evening is. Would it behoove us as a town to get legal counsel's opinion on today's oral arguments? And potentially send a letter to the Attorney General to ask for an extension of our application and compliance to the state. Until we hear F J C's ruling on the legality of forty A. With many communities not complying at this point. And delaying town votes, why wouldn't we wait at the community to vote on this law, possibly, uh, for spring town meeting? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Like, we have heard you. It's not on our agenda, so we can't talk about it.
That's, that's why I could speak about it, because it wasn't on your agenda, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, the chairman's report. Um. For those of you who have dialed in hoping to hear about one spiral hill because you haven't checked the agenda. That has been put off for another month, for another two weeks, uh, while we were waiting for some legal information. Um. We have on, um, are also on our agenda. A hybrid management plan task force update. Um, and unfortunately, the chair of the hybrid management. Plan Task Force is in another meeting now. We have in front of us, we have received a letter from Bayonne. Um, describing. The process that they are going through. And I suggest that we wait until we can talk to the chair about. What the goal is, what the desired outcome, what the possible outcomes are. Um, rather than spending a lot of time on it tonight, so. I'm not saying that we pass over it, but we actually like. Um, that's the extent of my report. Are there, other than moving the hybrid management task force back on to. List of action items, um, could there be other action items?
I had a question, um, because at one point we had an action item. To review. My room on Beach Street, the parking enforcement, automated parking enforcement. I thought we were gonna do that after the season and. I didn't go back and check other action item forms, but I, I thought it was on there, or are we planning on including it in the discussion on November fourth? On the parking policy, just as resident parking stickers.
So I actually thought we would do the, um, stick review as part of, uh, the chief's quarterly report.
Oh, okay, so it'll be part of the chief's quarterly report.
That was my thinking on that one.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to know where it was. Okay, thank you.
Any other? Okay, um. Caitlin, someone's here.
Uh, yes, I think she's coming in, yeah, she's, uh, she's answered.
I'm present.
Hi.
Hi.
Could you start by just giving us a generally tour? Description of, of why you're, what your interest is in this committee and why you think it'd be particularly good for it.
Yes, so I've applied to, um, be a participating member on the town welcoming committee. And, um, my experience with the town welcoming committee actually, um, happened the first time when I moved to the town. Last February and, um, I received a plate of cookies and a nice card welcoming to the town. And with contact info and a nice letter saying that if you need any help, you'd like to be shown around. Um, we have people who are willing to do that, and I was very impressed also by, um, there's a paragraph in there about. Um, pairing students up with, uh, like aged, um, peers. And I thought, uh, that I've never lived in a town that's had a welcome committee, so I was impressed by that and I felt welcomed. Um, and I recently saw that they need volunteers to participate on the committee. They've had a few people decide they wanted to leave, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to, uh, contribute and to get to know people in town. Uh, my background, I come from a teaching, I'm an educator, former educator, and, um. I worked on a similar volunteer committee at school there. Um, called the Sunshine Committee, and we did things like welcoming new teachers, hosting events, taking collections for celebrations. Um, things like that.
Questions?
Um. No question, just a comment, it's nice to see someone who's. Gonna be on both side, you know, has come in and seen how it works and then, so, you know, I think that's good.
Debbie, how many programs do we have?
There's three left.
Three, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna make the same comment, Jeff, I think it would, it would be great to have someone on the committee who just went through the experience. Of being welcomed and certainly it's fresh in your mind what, uh, what went well, and if there's any ideas that, uh, we have that we could do better. I think it'd be great. Seems well qualified.
John.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think my colleagues have said it all, someone who's new in town, you really, you really have. Uh, have experiences to, as to what's working and what can be improved right now, and I think that's very, very important, so. Great, thanks for raising your hand.
Ryan?
Not one of them, okay, yeah, I can't add to that, you know, I've been.
Okay, well, I'm going to. I'm, I'm, I'm going to, uh, channel Becky. All we have, every volunteer, do you have enough time to do this work? Um. Are you currently working, um, is there anything that is on your schedule that might interfere?
Not that I foresee, I work, um, usually nine to five hours, I have a flexible schedule, um. And after work, I just have commitments that I choose to commit to, so, um, different classes and. Things like that, um, so I do have the freedom and the leisure to participate and the time.
Okay, let's see, then, you go, we have a motion, yes, I would like to move to, um. Select board and appoint Caitlin Pelletier to the welcoming committee for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Discussion. Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. John.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And I say yes. Thank you. I hope you enjoy being on the committee and I hope it inspires you to get more involved with the town.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, Tyson Goodrich.
No, not, not virtual.
Remembering welcome.
He was notified.
Okay, well, we can put off and notify him again and then bring him on next if he, if he's still interested. Uh, right. Seven minutes or so. People are supposed to talk about whichever house. Real don't fix. Kathy?
Yeah, I don't know what he's doing.
I would just finally let through this. Such an efficient meeting.
Anybody bring a deck of cards?
Um, I have a couple of, of updates, um, I did finally. Get back to the school committee, um, they are, they're doing. Um, the sorts of things that they often do in the fall, which is to review programs, um. And, and, um. So that really is an area where the select board has very little to do and very unpolished. Um, of some interest is that they are working on a new policy for their reserves. Um, they have reserves in a variety of forms, um. I think they have spent down their old, um, choice fund completely. And that's not renewed because the choice money that comes in from choice in students is spent in the year that it comes in. Um, but they have other forms of reserves and they've, they decided to pick. Actually, they haven't decided, they're discussing whether they should have. A range of, they should measure, they know that they want to measure their reserves against their annual budget. And they're wondering whether they should have. A range of percentages, you know, lower bound and upper bound, or whether they should have a target, a single target. And they're talking about keeping eight, eight percent, um. And that will, that will continue to talk about that in future meetings, um.
Yeah, I think eight to ten is about. I wanna be.
Um, that's, um. There's, um, some discussion that, that, um, they don't need as much because. Um, the towns also have reserves, but. The school can spend its reserves on the vote of the school committee. Um, whereas the town reserves would have to go through a town meeting, so if there were to be a crisis. It's, it has, there's some merit to their having money of their own to spend, and one of the crises might be. Um, so that there's a failed budget, so they go on a, um. What they call a twelve twelfths, which is the, yeah, where they spend. Only a twelfth of what they spent the previous year, um, each month and, and. Depending on when it hits, it can be very awkward, because you really have to make payroll every time. So, that's kind of where that is, um, and that's really the only thing that we're working on, that. I heard about, but make, was making a difference. Okay, um. The consent agenda. That anyone, anything anyone wants to take out of the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that the select board approve the consent agenda items.
Discussion.
I have one question, I might ask that of Greg with regard to the consent agenda, on, on the vehicles for the council on aging. That leaves us with three vehicles, uh, Greg.
That's correct, the, the two. Well, mini buses, I guess, to call them, and then the one man.
Right, one of which is electric, the other two are regular gasoline powered, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure what the count was, okay.
Yeah.
I have a question just for my own interest. Municipated, they get, they get a percentage of the auction, how mu- how much, what are the auction fees and how's that work?
We typically have, um, well, we've done, we've done it on our own. Most of the time, but we have used the muni bid process as well. Um, not remembering their, their cut.
Um, it's usually a percentage.
Right, it's a percent of the, of the sale, and I'm, I'm not remembering what that is on hand.
Yeah.
I, I can certainly get that for you.
Yeah, it's not important, I was just curious, you know.
I'm surprised a hundred thousand miles is, uh. Is a full life? On a vehicle, because both of those vehicles are around a hundred thousand miles, but, um, I guess they're hard miles.
Yeah, they're hard miles, and they, uh, sitting, sitting out back here hasn't, hasn't helped their life.
The rest is what.
The, the rest is the problem, yeah.
Yep, okay.
A ten-year-old man.
Yeah, fourteen, so it's, yeah. Yeah, it's about.
And it's, uh, it's part of the, um, replacement cycle that the state provides. So they, we get, um, eighty percent. They grant for eighty percent of the cost of a new man. They're giving the cycle off hands five or six years or something like that. So.
Yeah.
Good.
Interesting, that's. A lot of miles, but two of the answers are just basically in-town driving, isn't it, for the most part?
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, they do, they do go to doctor apartments and.
It's still, I mean, it's. It's, it's twenty thousand miles a year that the two mans are putting on, plus whatever we have in the other ones too. So these things that they're used.
I know that there's a renewed advisory about, um, the electric. Ones in the salt water, if you're parking it out here. Then, um. I guess in, uh, Florida, the storm surge, when they come up on, there's something about car batteries and salt water.
Yeah, something about water, salt water, anything. Yeah, there's not to put salt water in anything.
Exactly.
For, for the record, your name and, and address.
Oh, Dean, the hottest forty eight B two.
Thank you.
It's gonna blow up all the electric vehicles, but, I cracked it, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, they're all close. Uh. Okay, we have not had a vote on the consent agenda. We ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yes.
Brian says yes. All right, now is, um, eight, six fifty, and the chatter house. When will be? He agrees. Um, does anyone have comments on that?
So, the basic proposal here is to increase the fees. Uh, both the weekday and the weekend rate, by fifty dollars from where they cut them on. So that would go to the three twenty-five for the weekday and three seventy-five for the weekend. For residents and then for non-residents.
But we previously had raised it for non-residents and it was staying.
It's, uh, seven fifty and eight fifty.
And as the, uh, it was mentioned at the, uh, at the meeting, as Cheryl pointed out. Revenues are down. Needs of the chatter house. I don't know if we kind of balance things out or make up a point.
I, I'm sort of surprised. That the revenues are down by a lot more than it appear from the number of rentals.
That must be weekday versus weekend?
That's the only thing I can think of, but.
Rent, more, non-residents aren't renting either.
Well, it's six versus eight, now, in twenty-two, they did have nineteen non-residents, but.
Yeah, did, was there any discussion as to why?
Well, they were coming out of COVID, I think, which the big thing was that all of a sudden, people are finding other places to go.
That's what I'm wondering, I just.
I mean, there's too much, I don't think there's a lot of hate, you know, there's not a lot of data to support the, the speculation, but. That was the first thing that came to mind, uh.
Yeah, makes sense.
You, you, you can see the drop from twenty-two to twenty-three, you can attribute a lot of that to non-resident rentals. But from twenty-three to twenty-four. Uh, you know, like Ann, I, I, I can't see without that num- that drop came from anywhere except weekday rentals are. Up and weekend rentals are down, I. I don't, uh, see otherwise.
That's.
We don't do anything to. Advertise or, okay, so this is all word of mouth as far as non-residents, non-residents, I mean.
Yeah, we're not, we're not promoting, that's not where the other.
Is there a reason why we haven't, is it because we usually get enough? Um, you know, interest to cover costs of maintaining it or?
Right, so usually, um, usually the weekends are, are, are pretty booked. I mean, in, in the past, you know, there's been a line and people sort of. Pushing elbows to try to get to the front of the line, so they get their first choice, that has weighed, we, we haven't, that would be quite the. Lineup for, for getting on that calendar early as there used to be.
So what, what kind of costs are we looking to cover?
Um, so are, um, uh, I don't have it in, in front of me, but, um. You know, the tax point in general, all costs in, there's probably. You know, the fifty thousand dollar range.
Greg, this, this money goes into general revenues, there isn't a revolving account or some sort of a enterprise fund or anything, is that correct?
Correct, this is general fund.
Yeah, okay, fine, so it's, it's a little harder to assign dollars in and dollars out, it's just. Okay.
Yeah, that, I could, I think that's the reason for my question.
I think so, yeah, I was, I could see where you were going.
I mentioned somewhere, I saw somewhere about, you know, wanting to. Cover costs, but one of the costs, I don't. Um, I don't really see that.
So this income line, that's after costs?
No, no, it's just straight revenue. It's just straight in. Yeah, so it's just, you know, how much do you associate with the cost of tux to the chatter house versus. Retunda, the beach, the restrooms, you know, so that, so I'm giving you the all-in expense of, of tax point.
Yeah.
But not including every few years when we have to rebuild it.
Correct, yeah, that's, this is operating at capital.
Is there a particular rush to make this decision? Cause I just was curious, is, um, if we're going to, you know, if there's been a decline in revenue. Uh, it makes sense that one thing you look at is increasing the rate. Um, but you may also want to do other things, like, for example, promote it, advertise it. That also increases costs, I'm just trying to get a handle on, um. What the costs are that we're trying to cover and is that the right number?
I'm looking at this, and I think that twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, which are COVIDed and coming out of COVID. Okay, all the other numbers are consistent. Okay, twenty-three, twenty-four, pretty much consistent with sixteen, seventeen, you know, they're all. So.
As far as revenue, I agree with you.
I'm as far as, I mean, I don't know, uh, as far as promoting it goes, uh. You know, I think being an outdoor venue during COVID, and coming out of it was. Uh, popular place for the surrounding communities, but now they've got other options again.
I mean, maybe it's, we do both, here, but it's an end way advertised.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, um, number one, is there a sense of urgency on making a decision tonight?
Um, you can delay it another couple of weeks.
I just would like to understand what costs we are trying to cover. Operator, you said, you know, not the rebuilding, but what are the operational costs that we might be interested in, because if you're going to raise it. You want to make sure you're, you're covering the desired costs, and I wouldn't want to do that every year, you know. I just feel like I need a little more info, but.
So you're thinking fifty's not enough?
I don't know, because I don't know what the costs are, so I, I.
Well, I think the only real cost associated with that would be the parking attendant.
Uh, we don't have one.
No, but they keep, there's someone up there.
So we don't, yeah, we're not, uh.
I mean, so this.
In a few years, if we have a person actually checking cars, but we do have a person. Maintaining, cleaning, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I would, I mean, there's gotta be some maintenance on the bill, I just. Usually, before you set a price, you understand what your costs are, that's basic.
We can have a little presentation of that, I think, at the next meeting.
Even, even a little memo, I mean, just.
Greg?
Who's the, uh, John, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I, I've got, I've got a question, I'm just looking at the trends here of the rentals and that, you know, there are blanks there from, uh. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, I'm not sure, maybe records weren't kept. But one thing I would like to know is, we have a fixed inventory here. And I don't know how many spaces there are to rent versus what's going on, we may have reached the ceiling. You know, I mean, if our inventory is X and we're at ninety percent of X.
Certainly, weekends, summers are pretty, you're normally pretty booked.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I just don't know, I mean, was it like twice a day? Um, in general.
Morning, a morning rental and an afternoon slash.
I know, and so, and so on the, on the, on the weekends, you've got, uh, what, say. Say, say you've got twenty weekends, and so that's, uh, twenty, forty, that's eighty slots. And then you've got, uh, the weekdays, I, I would like to know something about, you, you know, weekend rentals, what's going on there. And the weekday rentals, so that we can see where we are with inventory relative to what's going on, we may be.
Basic utilization of the asset, right, your asset utilization.
Yeah.
Operational costs to cover, that we're trying to cover, and, and some rationale.
I, I, I agree.
Rational for the new fees, I, I feel more comfortable with that.
Suggest that we include the, um. Or if you buy a beach, it ha- it's essential to the, to the use of the chatter house. Oh, Dean, you had?
Um, well, just a suggestion, um, maybe to solicit feedback from the renters. To see what, what, whether they felt it was worth it, the price, or what some of the shortcomings were, whether they want, uh. Better kitchen facilities or better weatherproofing options or something like that, just to see, get a gauge for, you know. How to, um. To see what, whether the price is reasonable for the demand.
So, we will put this on next meeting's actions. And. Try and get, is that where we have enough time to get the information?
Yeah, that's, yeah, hopefully this one.
Okay. Okay, I think it's.
Branch.
I missed the part about the staggered start.
Oh, it's.
Yeah.
We just want to get getting for you guys, and so we'd all have company shows. We just want to get getting forward, you guys, and so we all have company shows.
So I can stay with the MBZ zoning, because we're doing the final stuff too. Is that okay? Welcome.
That's convenient that you have. Built in.
I'm not supposed to be using this.
Yeah. So if I could, I'll I'll call our finance committee meeting together, uh, uh, tonight, uh, with Lori Creighton, Tom Parkin, Steve Hottas, and Andy Olber.
What are your FY twenty-six priorities?
Good question. We should ask that question.
Well, I got there. While you were thinking about.
Well, I mean, I guess there's almost a perennial goal of somehow better getting a hold, a handle on, uh, capital planning. It's forecasting five and ten years. Look ahead. We have that now, but, uh, you know, somehow it ends up being kind of fractured as we go through it, I'd say, despite, you know, our greatest best efforts, I think. Um, so we've talked a bit about that, uh, as a big picture item. And then, you know, generally, you know, the focus is on, uh, the the major budget items. Police fire, DPW, and the school. Uh, our focus this year with the liaisons is, um, actually kind of pairing people up on finance committee. Finance committee to meet with each of those entities, or at least, you know. Yeah, so each of those was to so that there's, um, a little better perspective that we can bring back at a meeting before we're about to meet with those those groups. So big picture, I'd say that's kind of tactically how we're looking at things.
What are? Do you have in the, um, one to five-year range for Captain? Bad question?
No, no, I I'd say without a list in front of me, it's hard to.
Yeah.
Extemporaneously list them out. You know, all the favorites, uh, central copper. I know there's.
P-FAS, I'm reasonably sure. Relocating with EPW.
Yes, yes, all that, or.
Continuing to work on pipes.
Yep, yep. And, you know, as well as, you know, I think resiliency certainly enters into the conversation. Particular relation to the the police department. And, you know, I know, I don't know, formally had a discussion, but I've certainly wondered whether or not the discussion of any sort of W facility ought to, you know, there might be some merit in trying to factor in public safety at the same time. Uh, whether it's a common facility or shared site somehow. I think it's worth looking at those things. Uh, there could be some cost benefit in combining those things rather than having separate two separate projects.
Under climate resiliency to express any water treatment?
Yes, yeah.
The wastewater treatment? Yeah. Greg, I thought we had funding for much of that. The resiliency of the wastewater treatment.
So most of the funds are upgrading. Out of that, upgrading will include elevating electrical equipment in junction boxes, that sort of thing. And some, I would say, short-term floodproofing, but not the not the long-term real floodproofing of the plant. That's probably a sixty million dollar project as a standalone. If if you want to keep the plant where it is and basically build a the dike around it, that's going to keep out the water. So I think the shorter-term efforts are going to be underway soon. It's still in design phase, but it'll be getting ready to go off the bid fairly soon, uh, this this winter. And, you know, the hope is that that buys us, you know, twenty years' time. And then, you know, what to do as we get closer to that twenty-year mark. Are we? Do we decide to try to harden existing plant and put in that major dike? Or do we think about relocating the plant? Neither neither option is inexpensive. Relocating and building new plant is very expensive.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, it's it's the on the table.
One of our challenges is, and and Andy mentioned this, is the capital plan. You know, it it changes from year to year. You asked about five-year plan and the ten-year plan.
I actually didn't ask about the ten-year plan. I was very careful about that.
Um, but, you know, because things happen, you know, I mean, you've got permitting issues with the state and things just move. And I think we find it very difficult to look at a capital plan over any more than a year sometimes, because something gets delayed and carried over to the next year, and and this is sort of a constant issue. And I think we found that the town's sweet spot is working at about three point one, three point two million in capital a year. When you go beyond that, you know, this too many streets get dug up, too much equipment is moving, it's just hard. So how do you? How do you do this three or four million a year? And and make it continuous? And I think that's one of the things that we as finance committee have struggled with, because it seems like each year we come up to annual meeting, and it's like a snapshot. Okay, this is what we're going to do this year, but we didn't do this last year, and we're hoping to do this next year. It's very hard to get sort of a multi-year run on it. And I I think we're trying to make more of an effort to really live by your point and see what see how that affects, obviously, the tax rate debt analysis.
So the real challenge there is with the bigger facilities, because those have, A, they're big, big-ticket items. And and B, that it is a lot, there's a long read on those. You know, so so what? We will be presenting in a couple of weeks that the five-year plus major facilities out to twenty, I think it's twenty forty-five or fifty. And it will identify a new DPW garage, a new public safety facility, a new store plant, and a new school in that thirty-year timeframe.
Another new school or just Essex?
Essex.
Oh, that's nice. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, those are, like I said, those are big-ticket items. And so you're looking, uh, that substantially new new bonds, new bonding to do that. But I'm I'm hoping to show, uh, progression that that you you need to make some political calls to whether or not that's palatable, but there there's a big hit, meaning this we did the six percent range of the tax increase in a couple of years, couple of three years with the elementary school in Essex plus DPW plus PFAS. Those three require a big increase to to bond for those. And then and then as things come offline, as we retire debt, as as new construction, with new tax base grows, you're able to take on the substantive projects down the line.
I think it's worthwhile, the discussions that have a sense of willingness to recategorize and reprioritize certain things like, uh, DPW, we've certainly been talking about for a while, and there's lots of rationale for moving forward with that project, but in the context of all these other capital lines that you just mentioned. They, however aged and decrepit it may be, they do have facilities, and there could be a lesser project that could happen in the current situation to to bridge a gap.
Or a less expensive project in a new location. We don't have to do traditional brick and mortar the way we've done traditional brick and mortar. There's lots of new options for facilities that we haven't really looked at in detail yet.
You could. Yeah, right. I mean, a garage is a different spec than than an office.
There's there's some merit to having easily run the business, act the business, so some office is probably.
You can build out office space inside a steel building.
Exactly. Lots of towns, Carlisle, Chelmsford, have all done fire stations and other things and using very different approaches. Um, it's worthwhile making sure we do that due diligence, because everything doesn't have to cost twenty five million dollars. I'm interested in seeing what, you know.
I like that. I'm I'm willing to stop thinking about it. Just a municipal center. Yeah, all right.
I thought that's a town hall.
Oh, you more. If we put, uh, you know, as you say, public safety and DPW together, but we've got to find a site that's, uh, is the little dump site, pick it up.
Silverstone Stables.
Yeah, so but these are things that I think that, uh, if we start thinking in that direction as opposed to no, it's vibrating, this has to be here and it has to be there. I'm willing to stop thinking about, uh, maybe it makes some sense.
I also think we've got to really push hard on on requirements, right? Because right now it's kind of a wish list, and and I haven't seen the evidence of, you know, I I don't just have, we haven't gone down to that level of detail. How much space do we need versus what we want versus what we have now? Usually, the first request is a lot larger than what we have, and you really got to push hard on that. And I just don't see the evidence that that work has been done yet, which is very important for this project.
All the time, it'll happen when you when you hire a design.
Or. True, but if you're taking a different approach and doing something more, you know, prefab or some other building technique, you got to get into the requirements even before you pick the the, um, approach or pick the partner, the supplier partner, because you may maybe a completely different set of people you'd be evaluating. A completely different set of companies you'd be evaluating. You really want to have a good feel for, especially in a very mobile department like the DPW. Yes, they're gonna, there's gonna be some administrative space needed, but not nearly as as much as people who are sitting at desks all day long, right? So, um, you know, it's a very different environment when you're dealing with a high-concrete mobility.
Yeah, you could you could pursue it as a design-built project when the contractor that hires the design firm keep the keep the budget tight that way. Also, I mean, you know, and I think you're, I think the the direction you're talking about, the idea that we're not necessarily trying to build something like like Hamilton built for their fire, right? This is the building that's going to be out of sight, probably, up on a hill, and doesn't necessarily demand the same kind of aesthetic concern.
Just sort of going up another five thousand feet. We oftentimes look at capital lists, and and we're not sure what makes good financial sense, what the political tea leaves say, you know, and things move around. And I think some guidance from you folks and, um, our collective best guessing as to, okay, DPW sewage treatment plant, roads, Central Street, what what order should these things fall into? Because there's the political component, there's the financial component, there's the construction component, there's the scheduling component, all these kinds of people. But I think it kind of begins with, what are the people of the town willing to sign up for to start with? And that's why you all get paid the big dollars. You know, it kind of begins there with a, you know, a wish list, and then we could attack it.
There's also the, you know, we have a health issue with the P-FAS. And that gives that a big boost.
Yep, as it should.
But I think, you know, Art brings up a good point. You know, Greg, if you're going to show us something in a couple of weeks, right? You're saying focused on capital, right? It is our role to try and prioritize that, okay, first pass. And and then, and that's, I I I think it's, we talked about this before, it's really important to finish capital planning around those big rocks for the for the year before we start having discussions on the pennies after the fact, right? So if we do nothing else different this year, I'd really like to do that. But secondly, you know, in the private sector, when you're dealing with the kind of huge capital expenses that we're projecting, the other thing that's done is really looking hard at stopping or slowing down things that are not priorities, okay? And that's where that operational review, right, I think, should help us. And I apologize, I forgot the timeline on that. No.
Especially between now and, you know, February.
Okay, so I I think that's a really important input to see, to get some outside eyes on what we could should do differently to, you you want to minimize your operational costs, free up money for these big capital items. That, to me, is what we should be also focusing on. Difficult discussions, but they're often necessary to avoid sticker shock to the residents, you know.
Well, I think some of these things are going to bulldoze their way to the front, though, too.
That's interesting. Well, yeah.
Like this Essex Elementary, the MSBA is involved, and that's the go. That's going to push a lot of stuff aside.
We have to also, yeah, what's the next P test?
Well, I'm going to agree with the the Essex DPW and the PFAS being the three big drivers, but, um, I'd also like to mention Athletic Field's still in there, because I think, you know, Pine Street Field didn't really fill the void we were looking to, and I think Sweeney Park is still, you know, something we really need to try to figure out. And then, um, some interim, rather than, I know thirty-year plans for new, um, public facilities, but in the interim, it would be nice if we didn't have to go through a drill every time we had a flood tide with like the police station, the fire station. So maybe some interim repairs to prevent that type of thing. I don't know, uh, if we could put like a wall around the boiler in the fire room so that that doesn't flood out, which would be a critical. If we can put a lightweight fill for four feet in the town hall lot and raise the the boat ramp, you know, those with retaining wall at the at the garage, some something interim that we're not going through like fire drill every time we get a flood tide. I'd like FY twenty-six to look at that as.
The, uh, as far as Sweeney.
Yes.
Brian is our liaison to the.
That sounds so much better when you say liaison. I said, I mean, uh, they are, they are, uh, looking at it right now. Okay, I'll have some kind of report, but, uh, the question is a big thing is, is it dirt field or natural grass? For Sweeney, and if it's natural grass, I believe CP C funds can, uh, be used towards that. But then there's also the drainage. There's a lot of things going on, which is, I studied that now. And this is going to be blasphemous. I wouldn't, I I don't, I don't put playing fields in the top of the list right now. You know, we've got to buy this, uh, creative.
You know, we've got to buy this, uh, creative. But, uh, there's other things that are more pressing than the, the fields in my opinion, my humble opinion. The senior center is another. Senior Center's moving along.
And, and I think the goal is that much of the senior center will be catered for outside of tax rate.
Correct. Yeah, used to, used to do fundraising for the renovation addition. That would be planned for that building.
So the renovation, furnishing, all of it.
Even, even, even as, uh, you know, raise money for an endowment for the operation. Depending how successful the fundraising can be.
So, oh, you checkbooks.
We, we might wanna put a firewall between what the private funding is for the senior center versus what it is for town hall office space. Um, I don't know if you wanna do a fund drive for, for that. But.
Oh, for, for moving the council on it.
Yeah, yeah, some of that. We might wanna be careful about that.
It's kind of a little detail point that's really more for, right, in Andrea, but you like, well, as we go through all these budget meetings and trying to get the revenue onto the same page as the expenses would be very helpful. Um, oftentimes, you know, things like parks and rec, we've got revenue over here and we've got expenses over here. Harvard is another example where revenue comes in. And we're sort of always hopping back and forth trying to figure out where the revenue is. And, and it sounds like a detail, but when you get down to looking at lots and lots and lots of budgets and you're trying to figure out should we peel a little back on this? Should we amplify a little of that? Knowing what the revenue and the expenses is really helpful.
To give a really small example, parking, um, meter mates.
Yes.
Um, they show up in the police salaries and the revenue that they cut, bring in, shows up someplace completely different.
Yeah, I'm clear.
And, and it's easy to say, well, we can just save a little bit here by not enforcing our parking laws, right?
I know it's a detail, but it, it saves a ton of time if we could, yeah.
Um, if, if I may add something here. I look at all of these projects and most of them have been on the table with varying timelines for a, a couple of years now. And I know that every six months you look at it and say, oh, DPW's in the lead. And then six months later, it looks like PFAS is where we're gonna have to spend money. I think that if you model this, no matter which project, and, and the school obviously is a factor there. You're gonna have to borrow money at, at maybe a very similar rate regardless of which project seems to be the lead horse in the race from one year to the next. I, I can appreciate the finance committee saying, you know, it's a moving target. I'm not saying the goalposts necessarily move, but the color of the goalpost seemed to move. So, um, trying to plan for this, maybe, maybe you look at modeling this several different ways with different projects at, you know, coming along at different rates and you still wind up in the same place money wise or very close. And that's the big challenge.
Yeah, but one of the things, when your debt service starts to increase, you wanna look at really controlling operating costs, I think. That's, uh, the big. So that, you know, we do know that our debt service is gonna go up, so we really have to be mindful of the.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think Maury said, yeah, three million bucks is what we spend each year for basic capital improvement activities that, well, for lack of another descriptive term, affect our lifestyle because some street is dug up somewhere. And, um, that's probably a number. We've been working with that, I guess, for now, I don't know, five or six years. It's been a while. Um, and it seems that that is going to continue to go unless we need to look to take some of that money to put it to some of the bigger projects, but the pipes are like forever.
Pipes, lots of pavement, yes. As soon as we're done, we got thousands of them.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's just a fixed, it's a fixed, fixed cost there in the budget.
Greg, what are your thoughts to the town of the Culver project?
So, um, so those monies have been appropriated. About seven hundred fifty thousand. Round numbers of six, six million dollar project. So.
That, that is right now sort of in the cards, moving along.
Yes.
That, that one's going to happen.
So that.
At, at a known time.
We, we should break ground on that project a year from, from now.
Seriously mean that.
Yes, yes.
And that money's been appropriated.
Yeah, the town funds are there.
That's not even on the list anymore, right?
The federal grants or that, that's not on the list.
Well, we just box that right off the list. We're getting something of fun.
I think this, I mean, you're just starting.
Yeah, yeah. I, so I just, I think as a, as a maybe a process, um, this kind of discussion is very helpful. I think it would be would be more helpful even if we keep this level of discussion going. Um, because I don't know, the we, um, it feels like when we have further discussions within, you know, as part of our finance committee meetings, they feel like they're in a bit of a vacuum because they're, they're not in the context of priorities that, that a select board might be tracking. Um, so I think it would be good to check in maybe once or twice through the, the budgeting process this year.
I don't know. In fact, I agree with you completely, but.
Yeah, well, and, and it could very well be, um, you know, because I know a lot of times one or two of you will sit into our meetings. And as long as you can represent what your current priorities are on those items, you know, that, that could do the trick.
Well, I think it's important to your point. We're gonna be really focusing though on capital first, right? When we're done with that, we should all, there should be a joint meeting on just that. Okay. What did we learn through that process? What do we think we wanna put forward? And ideally, we could mature our process enough so that we set operational targets. Right? That we believe will be affordable to the residents. Um, you know, we, so it's nice to work from the bottom up, okay? But I wish we could do a little bit more top, of a top down look, right? Because if something's gonna be a very expensive, you know, capital year, right? Maybe we, we need more than the three million. Um, to Dean's point, we, we've gotta put some pressure on the operational cost and it'd be nice to be able to set some targets for the for the, for town hall and say, look, what would it look like if your operational budget was this? Okay, we, we give them a target. And it's it's, it's a good way of getting people to think differently about what is really a want versus, um, a need.
Yeah.
And, and I just would like to see us do a little more setting targets, at least we can get a draft of what it might look like. I mean, might think it's ugly and no, we don't like that, but we, we, we don't look at it, you know, so anyway, it's keeping my wishes.
I was just gonna say, if you had a timeline that said, okay, PFAS, we're gonna try and deal with in the next three years. DPW move potentially year two to year four. You kind of sequence that out like a, from a schedule or a strong in schedule. Then, then you can look at it and say, okay, how much capital do we need and what's the impact on the taxpayer?
Right, that's what we'll show you.
Now you start to really say, all right, here's and then you can look at it from the point of view of what's the spend rate, what's the staffing needed, what's the impact on community? You can, you can look at it from different angles, but you gotta start with.
I'm sorry, are you gonna be doing that on the sixteenth? Is that that? Yes.
Do we anticipate any breakthroughs in the housing development in, uh, you know, I know we've been stockpiling money in the CPC for something to happen as far as, um,
And, and, and the affordable housing.
Or something, but it, it, that might, that might come out of nowhere and be a priority, you know, to fly inside us as well, so.
Sorry, Greg, I just wanna clarify, this meeting where you're gonna be presenting all this capital, um, these capital items, is that at the October sixteenth bin con meeting? Okay, so is nothing planned to be presented at a upcoming select board meeting?
Yeah, I can, on the twenty first.
Twenty first, okay, so first cut it at the, um, sixteenth and then we each own us something and.
Very similar.
I do hope it's more than just similar.
That makes some good ideas and changes, yeah.
That's why I use the word similar.
I spend productive and interesting and valuable. Is, is there anything further we need to do right now or, um, can we wait a month and a half and come together again?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think a lot of information's gonna come out in the sixteenth.
Yeah, we're kind of waiting for that, yeah.
Well, the sixteenth is sixteenth of October, twenty first of October, but, but, but our, our getting together again will be after this eighteenth of November. Because there's sort of a focus on the category.
Yes, of course.
Tends to distract the select board.
Yeah. And I think that timing could make a lot of sense.
I have a strong personal desire to meet in the other room, so. If, if we're, we're done, um, thank you very much. We will be with the, with, between the liaisons and, and, and and, uh, in the meetings, yeah.
So as I, remember to you, um, I can think of the main show is the, the N B K A three A zoning proposals that are being finalized to kind of all that we need here. Additionally, uh, listed possibilities for some additional articles. Um, first one being stormwater regulations. Uh, we, we are under some pressure from EPA to update our stormwater regulations. We did this, uh, honestly, a few years ago, following the D E P guidelines. Um, those guidelines were, were not as, uh, complete in EPA's eyes as, um, it should have been in their eyes. And so they are asking communities to, to revisit, revisit them. So, like I say, we're, we're under, uh, pressure from EPA to be doing this. They wanted us to do it last spring. We, we begged for a little more time. They said, okay, do it in the fall. Um, so that's why it's potentially before us here. So that's one. Uh, the second one, uh, is the potential land conservation deal that Essex County Green Belt is pursuing. You heard, um, information on that at your last meeting. Uh, the CPC has since approved that project as, is recommending it. You know, going before the voters. Uh, again, from Greenbelt's perspective, they would much prefer to have that vote, um, before the end of this calendar year. Uh, and so that's why it potentially is on the docket as well. A third, uh, need, uh, could this, this one be put off to the string? Probably could. We, we have an unpaid bill from last fiscal year, um, and there's some consulting work that was related to the forty B appeal. Uh, some invoicing that, that got lost, you know, meaning different folks here. Uh, and so uh, because the fiscal year is closing, because we don't have enough dollars remaining in, in the attempt that we had set aside with this, um, it requires a, a special vote. And that is a, a nine tenths majority vote at, at town meeting, uh, for slightly under ten thousand dollars. Uh, which will come out of our, our fund balance, our free cash account.
Just out of curiosity, what happens if the voters did not approve that?
Yeah, we're, we're in a bind. We can't pay it. Uh, and the vendor could sue us and then we go through a process of trying to get that resolved.
And a question, if it's on the special, if it's on the regular town meeting in April, does it become a budget item for the subsequent budget year? And that doesn't require nine tenths?
No, it would still, because it's a previous year obligation, it still requires the nine tenths. So it would be basically a supplement to this current year's budget, but requiring that nine tenths vote.
So basically, we'll try to approve it or we wind up getting sued.
Yes.
That's hard.
Yeah.
We've done that once recently.
Yeah, I, you know, I tried to avoid it. You know, I, I don't like these at all. Uh, I just, I don't think it's around the top of our game. We don't have any unpaid bills. Uh, this literally got stuck in a, in a committee members folder and and, uh, it didn't come across our desk. So, uh, sometimes it happens. This is one of those times. Luckily, it doesn't happen very often for us. Uh, we try to avoid it. And then whether or not there's any citizen petitions or not, uh, we have another, uh, week or so. It's twenty eight days prior. Yes, is the deadline.
Okay, any word about? Is there something?
Yeah, I have not heard recently what there is. Sorry, I'm not sure.
You had mentioned earlier, um, a change to restrict the use of ADUs as, uh.
Well, that's right. I'm sorry, I did mention that. We talked about that a little bit at the last time. Um, so, yeah, so that has a potential for that. Uh, as, as a template, I, I mentioned Gloss's new ordinance, which I think, um, you would find interesting and applicable here as well.
Could you, could you send that?
Yeah, let me circulate that around to all. I meant, I meant to do that last week and I didn't.
Short term rentals, is that what you mean?
Yeah, short term rental. So this is, um, because of the new ADU law that's gonna come into play from February. Folks have talked about, should we beef up our short term rental
Yes.
ordinance to prevent those ADUs just becoming short term rental units and really not helping our housing problem.
And, and, and I would put in the caveat that somebody would have to start in February, build an ADU and use it as an Airbnb before our April town meeting.
Uh, yeah, you, you've got a very short window there. Um, you don't have a lot of exposure.
Yeah. But I think we should see what the.
Yeah, let's take a look at it and you can decide. Um, if, if we should add it to this, to this go round. Um, so, um, you know, if we have four or five items besides the main attraction, you know, I'm, I'm assuming the main attraction is, you know, a couple of hours of debate and discussion uh, before a vote is made. And then these other ones, ninety minutes worth of, of additional effort and discussion, I would.
Whether we put them first.
Right, you might try to get them first, get them out of the way.
That would be my recommendation.
I, I agree with that. I, I think it's, I think it's doable. I I think it's, I think it's doable. I, yeah, I think someone's going to call the question after two hours. So. So, you know, three and a half hour meeting, you know, even that's, even that, even if that's stretched to four hours, that's not unreasonable, so. It seems like we could, we can manage this this list.
So, subject to seeing the Gloucester ADU, um. Agree that that these are things that.
Get them out of the way. It'll make the spring meeting shorter too.
There'll be something new there too, but yes, you can always hope.
Get me over that entirely.
Okay, we, we've all read Vion's letter and and the questions that we have are not so much about how often he, but whether he will.
Yes, okay, got it.
Okay, a few items here, um, just a follow up. We we had your discussion with Kate about the potential of. Of having them do some, um, complimentary service, uh, aimed at seniors in particular. Um, you asked me to just reach out to some of our neighboring communities and they all felt that the service was, um, was doing well. In their particular community, they they gave it a pretty high marks with the services, um, that they're receiving. Um, so the process for joining is has been streamlined. It's just your decision. You can make that vote. Um, but if you wanted to reverse it, it still requires a town meeting vote. Um, so it's a little more complicated to get out than it is to get in, um, but it is reversible. If if that is something that you feel is would be necessary.
I mean, I I'm in favor of moving forward with that. I think we heard everything we wanted to hear and. Be helpful to our residents.
Maybe if we don't want to use it, but downside, there's still the November.
Still, still, still would like to see how how demand is for, uh, offering a service later on in the day, later on in the day. Because all of these services end at three and Kada will not change on that. But we but we can.
We can.
Yes, yeah, we could adjust our schedule or.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a possibility for sure. Okay, we'll keep working on that. Um, just a quick follow up on, on again, the lead survey EPA, it's a mandate from them. They loosened up some of the requirements the other day. We got some good news that. Uh, some of the penalties don't kick in until twenty seven, I believe it is.
How how much, how many, what's the response rate they're looking for before we get penalized or?
Well, ultimately, so if we don't have a response, they're going to assume it has left.
Okay.
So it behooves us to prove as many as possible. Um, ultimately, we will, we will get that proof when we're doing the meter replacements. Um, but we have a deadline in mid October of giving EPA our initial response.
Mid October next year?
No, this year.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Couple weeks.
Chuck's heard from like, I don't know, two hundred and two hundred and fifty people. He's got to hear from like sixteen hundred. So he's way short, but as as Greg says, he's banking on the fact that as we grind through these meters. We'll have hands on information on everybody. We're just not going to get people to respond to this survey.
We have that hands on information in a week, so.
We're not, we're not, we're not going to have it. We're not going to have it, but things go back and forth.
Is he able to use the date of the building creation in order to answer that question?
You can use that, um, so we will have a higher number of of potential, um. Homes with lead and as we, so so that number will be established. And then as we confirm, when we're in the, during the meters, that number will drop significantly. We have, like I say, a couple of years before we have to start taking action. Um, so it it's it's going to work its way through. It's, um, it's just not as streamlined as as efficient as it could. So that's where we are. Um, they they will, I I think they're putting out a communication to. This busy party is in Cameron the next week or so to try to get a few more responses. Well, that's where that is. Um, uh, this morning, Kathy and John were in the, uh, on the gym call with the recruiting firm. Um, we, the three of us haven't talked since we had that conversation, but I thought, um, it was a good, a good conversation with the firm. Uh, we certainly certainly know what they're doing. And have established themselves as the lead recruiting firm in the state at this point. They've, um, they've done about, what was it, sixty percent of the recruiting efforts in the last five years. And they've established a good database and they know a lot of, know a lot of people. So, Kathy or Johnny, want to share any more?
I can't think of a deficit. I mean, I think they they know their stuff. They're past town administrators and managers themselves. Lots of different types of towns that they worked in personally, um. So I I the presentation was very, very good. They're they're.
Yeah. They they did give us a a proposal at this point in terms of how things would work and, uh, the proposal was impressive. And they did say it'll probably be a challenging, uh, search for us and for them because it's a very competitive market right now. And our geography doesn't help us because they look for a radius of, say, a commuting time of forty five minutes around you. And of course, half of the distance around us is in the water, so we've got that fewer, uh, towns to geography to pull from. So they said it it'll be a challenge. But, uh, they certainly seem like they're up up to the task. There's no question.
So I don't know if you want to break that formal at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I I think they're more than qualified and I think it's, I'd be happy to work.
Yeah, I think I think we'll be, if you had a chance to. Oh, did I send out the proposal to everybody?
I don't, I think so. Yeah, I think we do the actual proposal, yeah.
Let me get, let me get the rest of you those that provide, sorry, I went to do that.
Yep.
You can, you can read it over if you have any questions, someone either ask me or Kathy and John. So let, get that moving forward. Um, mentioned some, um, meetings at the end of this week related to the next round of climate resiliency impact work with Harvard. Uh, if one of you had a chance to attend one or both, uh, just let me know. Um, and that'll be this Thursday and Friday at at eleven forty five. Uh, it's at the, uh. St. John's in Gloucester on Middle Street. I I'll get you the address. And then lastly, uh, not on, didn't make it in my panel, but, um, the celebrations for Ron. Yes, for Jack's most life and contributions to the town, uh, aiming for October twenty fifth. Uh, they're just trying to get a, so you can let me know if you think that worked for your schedule that afternoon. Um, next day or so, we're just, I'm trying to get that ahead.
Yes.
I do.
Not to sell ahead for you tonight.
Yeah.
Make a motion to return.
This is very efficient.
John.
Yes.
Yes, Kathy, yes. Thank you very much.
I got, I mean, Melly's not, he wants to.